Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for us.
I hear your dog calling.
Dog's calling.
Good morning, and welcome to the April 24th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Today's meeting marks the third anniversary of weekly presentations of dogs from the Lorraine County kennel. Nearly 100 dogs have found new homes and families since that first presentation. This is a little letter from Buddy, addressed to the board. It says, "On behalf of my canine cousins, as the first lucky dog to be shown, I want to say a big and loud thank you to the Lorraine County Commissioners, the wonderful wardens, and the staff, and everyone who makes this possible," and it's signed, "as best he can." My best friend Buddy." And that's Hal's dog, Hal, who does our meetings. Hal, you got a picture of your best friend Buddy back there? I think you need to show it. How do you like that? A dog that writes thank you letters. Okay? It says, "You make me happy." I think he brought Hal a lot of pleasure. Okay, Ted.
This week, our featured pet is a Chow mix pup that was found on 36th Street in Lorraine. Really great dog. Come here. Oh, you're busy looking at him, huh? Come here. Get a good picture of you. Come on, turn around. Turn around. Come on, turn around. There you go. Good boy.
Oh, he's picking up his paw, too.
Paw? Paw? There you go. Good boy. Oh, look at your paw. Come on, how you doing there, puppy? Hello there. Hi there.
Kisses.
Great pet. He'll be available at 3 o'clock on Saturday. Please stop by. We're having a great time adopting these dogs out, and they're some really good pets.
And thank you, Hal, for that little love letter from Buddy. A thought for today: We do not remember days, but moments. Life moves too fast, so enjoy your precious moments. And Madam Clerk, I believe you're on.
Today at 11 o'clock, we're going to have an IAC meeting. Under Public Hearings, at 10 o'clock, will be the second public hearing on the CHIP. And at 10:15, will be the TEPRE hearing on the Catholic Healthcare Partners. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Christmas comes once in a while. I don't need an executive session today.
Wow!
Did you take your temperature this morning?
Yes, I did, and we don't have any personnel actions. Unless, I know there's been some discussion on the, some ongoing negotiations out to sheriffs. If you want me to update you on that, we can do that. The exec can take five minutes and do that if you'd like. I know I spoke to Madam Commissioner on that. Would you like to just talk about that, or is everything okay with that?
I think it's okay.
Okay, then I'm fine. Mr. Twining, do you have anything for executive session?
No.
You don't have a personnel summary sheet done either.
No, ma'am.
Okay, so there were no action on number nine. Mark that down as a red letter.
I have it circled.
Wow.
Approve and waive the reading of the same for Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting minutes for April 17, 2008.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, authorize various purchase of service agreements for summer camp experiments for low-income children using TANF funds effective June 16 through August 1, 2008. Authorize director to execute on behalf of the board with prosecutor's approval as to form for one common ground overland for 210 camp placements in the amount of $36,750. Horizons Activity Center North Elmstead for 1,120 camp placements at five Lorraine County sites in the amount of $184,800. And Boys and Girls Global Lorraine County Overland for 975 camp placement at six Lorraine County sites in the amount of $188,545.31.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Under the sheriff, approve addendum three to extend earmark food service agreement providing inmate meals for county jail. Effective retroactive February 1, 2008 through January 31, 2009, increasing meal price based on population range from $1.10 to $1.55.
Also move. Second.
Discussion.
Sheriff, did you want to comment on this? It's just a...
Just the consumer price increase.
Imagine that. Cost of food's going up.
And it depends on the number of inmates as well. Thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, can I be instructed?
Thank you. Commissioners, a couple of brief things this morning. Yesterday, we finalized the RFP for the Children Family First Council and the Help Me Grow program that you had some concerns about back in November and December. We were having a lot of problems getting bills paid and things done. I want to tell you that we've met with the service coordinators now, I would say, around about five times. We've had very, very deep participation and in a real collaborative effort. We have revised a lot of procedures, and there was a lot of, what I can only term is too much bureaucracy in the whole process that was going on. We've been trying to streamline it, make it simple for people to operate under, and also find efficiencies and better outcomes with the way we're doing our applications. So the RFPs will be going out next week. The group as a whole, I think, are very, very satisfied with the way the process has gone. There's going to be some changes that will probably exclude a few people from being service coordinators in the future because we just simply have too many service coordinators, and that's one of the problems we had. But it's going to be a much more competitive process, but it'll also be streamlined to the point where it'll be easier for those people to operate under the guidelines that are out there. To Mr. Kalo, we did away with a lot of overgoverning.
Thank you.
On the process.
As long as we get the services. Help Me Grow's a heck of a program, and it ran into a couple of pitfalls, bumps in the road, so I'm glad we were able to address that and make sure we're getting the services done and the vendors paid.
Well, we became our own worst enemy. We were thinking we're doing a great job. Every time we added six more pages to the RFP or six more rules to, you know, how to spend something when it didn't need to be there. Most of the problems we were having, I'm not embarrassed to admit because it's a distance from my office, but we were making the rules that we couldn't live with. When we finally dove deep into the regulations and met with the state a few times, and then talked to the people who are actually putting the service onto the deck plate, we discovered that we didn't need all of that, and we've been able to thin it down and get a better process. I'm telling you all this because when the RFPs go out, you may be getting a little bit of pushback from some people that are service coordinators now that know that they may not be service coordinators in the future. We have, currently, we have six service coordinators. Six? Does that count the one that we unfunded in December?
That counts that one. It does not count the one that does the second opinion.
Okay. Okay, six. Our thinking is that, well, our thinking is the county would be better served, actually the most efficient way, but it would be too risky, would be one. We think we're going to be better served with just three service coordinators because we've got too many territory areas diced up, too many people trying to hire people on a limited amount of money, and there's a lot of overlapping issues. So we're going to be going through that process. Ultimately, the Children Family First Council and their advisory role will work with that, but the final decision comes at the administrative agent, which is the Board of Commissioners, with regard to that. They already are aware that there's going to be, I think they called it a thinning of the herd yesterday after we had that long meeting, so you may be getting some people calling you. So I want to make you aware that process is ongoing, but no decision's been made. These are just recommendations that we're looking at, but we did inform the group of how aggressive it may become this spring when the RFPs are reviewed. I think we dropped 70% of the RFP, came off the table. We thinned it down 60%?
Yeah, probably close to 60. And I think the RFP, I didn't get the date yet, but I think that's two weeks before they go out, not next week.
Well, thank you for streamlining the process for us.
Well, it was all of us. We do everything as a team up here. So, you know, Ron and I, although it was a learning experience, Ron, I've worked with this before, and, you know, Ron, I told Ron it was going to be fun, but he didn't believe me, and I don't think he still does.
And I still do.
I wonder why.
Also, Commissioners, for the second year in a row, you are finalists for a Team Neo Award in Northeast Ohio. Ron, you want to tell the board a little bit about what they're finalists for with Team Neo this year for the awards that were coming up in May? You don't remember?
I think you caught him off guard, Jim.
I did.
We made, I believe, through the Growth Partnership, 14 applications, and I don't know what we're finalists in.
We're finalists in the retention and expansion area for real teams. We've been, there was, this year, they received a tremendous amount of applications. Last year was a little thinner because it was the first year of the awards. We were, sorry, Ron. We were successful at getting the Collaboration Award for the Lorraine County Growth Partnership last year, which is, I believe, their most prestigious award. This year, we did submit about 14 applications, and we submitted various entities within Lorraine County, and we didn't even tell them. But in collaboration with the people at the college and our own folks filling out all the applications and doing the narratives, the real teams under the Lorraine County Growth Partnership, which you heavily support, have been chosen as a finalist, and I'm hopeful that we're going to get our second award for real teams. The other successful application we submitted was on behalf of the EIC out at the college and the Innovation Carder and Fund, and they have been selected as a finalist also. We did submit Team Lorraine County for the Collaboration Award, but they weren't successful in getting into the final three. The other ones were various organizations around Lorraine County that we have workings with. What we did, we formed a team under the Growth Partnership, and we took a look at all the good activities in Lorraine County. And, you know, the funny part is, we don't tell people what we're doing and apply for these awards. Nobody's going to give them to us. So I'll send you information on the date and the time. Last year, Lori, I don't know if you attended last year, but I think Ted and Betty, you both attended last year?
Yes, we did.
And we'll be getting a table, and we will have 12 seats down there, so we would love for all of us to go down there. The college is buying a table, and all together, we'll have about 24 seats, and if we need more, we'll buy more because we're just going to go down there because we know we're wonderful, and we're just going to make sure they continue to know that down there. So congratulations on being a finalist and supporting the real team process. And my last issue is, last week, I spoke to you at length concerning the Port Authority. I'm pleased to inform that the Lorraine County Port Authority did approve a $3.8 million loan for Global Green to relocate their operation here and begin providing jobs and opportunities for Lorraine County. It's an exciting partnership with the Port Authority and with the county commissioners because the Port Authority really cannot exist without the support of the county commissioners. Both Lori and Ted had an opportunity to be there, and I thought we had a tremendous meeting with the Port Authority, thought it went really well. With that, I do have a resolution here, a request from the board, that we do an additional line of credit for the Port Authority. We have a $2 million loan in the queue to National Bronze, and that's a project that you guys have often been intimately aware of as we've worked with them in the last two years. They haven't, they have not asked for their funding yet because they're not ready to go until, it's going to be another several months before they want to draw the funding, but they...
April 1, '09. Yeah, another year.
But they've been approved and bankable for the $2 million bond, so that's queued. With the $3.8 million to this new company, we're out of funds. We're not able to grant any more bonding. In fact, the $3.8 is right on the fringe of what the Port Authority can do right now.
Tom, what are you asking for, Jim, this time through? Because I've got one pending, it'll be about $1,008,000, hopefully in the next 120 days I'm working on also.
Well...
I brought that up a couple of times.
We're going to request $5 million line of credit, that the board allow us to use the strength of the county to gain a letter of credit from a bank and to do an additional $5 million worth of lending. We need $2.2 million just to meet current, I won't call them obligation because obviously we don't have to give them the bond, so it's not really an obligation, but how about a commitment? A current commitment so we can get those companies up and running. That would leave us about $2.4, $2.5 million. I'm just rounding the numbers in additional capacity. If you are successful, Commissioner, bringing us that additional deal, and it is at $1.8 million, we'll probably back you because that'll only leave us $800,000 or $900,000.
Well, again, then, once the line of credit goes out and the bonds are sold...
If we have the five deals, then our reserves fall, and then we can, we may be done. It all depends on timing with National Bronze and how many deals can, if we get three deals in the hopper before the end of the year, it could be a problem. So, but I just want to give you a status of the Port Authority and where we stand. It'll probably take another 30 days to get all the issuance done and the work done on the bonds for Global Green. The good thing is that National Bronze was waiting on their financing, and that gave us a little breathing room to do this work right now. And I will pass you this to Madam Clerk. These resolutions, this copy's there for the board.
It says, "A resolution expressing support for Lorraine County Port Authority to increase its program reserve letter of credit to an amount not to exceed $8 million or to secure an additional letter of credit in an amount not to exceed $5 million."
Correct, Commissioner.
Also move for approval. Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. You know, once again, without the support of the Board of Commissioners, whether I or Ron were working with the Port Authority, they would not be able to be a viable operation. And sometimes, again, I've said this many times in this room, you guys don't get credit for all the things you do. While the Port Authority may be a separate operation, it doesn't exist without the goodwill and support and the vision of this board. Thank you very much, and that's my comment this morning.
Thank you. Mr. Ennis?
I also do not need an executive session. Jim and I just did that because we know you have to stay for the IAC at 11 o'clock. I have nothing else to report.
Commissioner Lori?
It's a pretty busy week, like Jim said. Monday, we attended the Port Authority meeting. Also this week, Betty Sutton came to the Steelworkers Local 1104 to talk about the trade agreement with Columbia, and one of the Steelworker representative, Nellie, had gone to Columbia about 10 years ago, and some of the horror stories that she had talked about, I mean, it could make you cry. So I'm hoping that that trade agreement will not go through. I think, is it Voynovich? We still need to, we need to call Voynovich and tell him absolutely do not pass this trade agreement. And then the three of us also attended the land conservation Babcock Farm?
Babcock.
Babcock. Babcock Farm, almost 1,000 acres that'll stay in its natural state forever and ever, and it was a beautiful farm, and I was happy to be a part of that. And I think, Betty, you have a picture of that, don't you?
Yeah, and I will share it. And Mark says, asked me to share it with you, too.
Okay. And that's the end of my comments.
Short of mine. That means we got here even sooner.
I'm going to ask what you think.
Yeah, you're right. I know. Commissioner told me I'm here all day with you. After the Babcock dedication with the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, I hot-tailed it back to make the state of the city for the North Coast Chamber of Commerce, which was for Avon, Avon Lake, Sheffield, and Sheffield Lake. I'd commend Mayor Hunter from Sheffield Village and Mayor Zuber from Avon Lake, their first state of the cities. They did a very nice job. And the overall theme, it was nice to hear all four of them speaking, was cooperation, working together, visiting Ford together. The people from Ford said they'd never had that type of cooperation before, even, that anybody even cared, because as we remember in the past, there are a lot of fights and arguments about territory out there. Our community bump was involved with that to a degree, helping out, right, Rebecca? But, I mean, it seems to be a breath of fresh air out there, and they're really working hard to almost regionalize their Ford community, so it was very nice. Good news, the energy bill finally passed. Overall, happy with how it turned out. It's a shame it took them so long, but Governor Strickland stuck to his guns, threatened the veto, and they came out with essentially a very good plan. We all know that electric rates are going up to some degree, but they made sure they put a cap on it. About the only part in renewables that I wasn't happy with was the large utility companies are able to buy non-renewable products if the cost is 3% less than using the renewable. But over the years, as the benchmarks increase, the renewables, I think, so I think it's going to slow us down a little bit in some of the heavy development, but I think some of the smaller renewable companies and such, the Global Green Technologies and the small turbine people, I think we've got a real niche there we can start filling right away.
Do we have copies that are completed? I know that goes out to change.
I have 80 or 90 pages I've got forwarded to you.
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks. Because I know there were so many revisions, I stopped printing out.
Barryman, Ohio, sent me the recap sheet, and then State Representative Barrett, who I'd been speaking to since last week, just about daily or every other day, sent me the finished completed.
Great.
So, also, a chance to attend, I had a real nice event, the Student Senate from Lorraine County Community College last night, did an event for cerebral palsy. They did a very nice job. Pogie did a great job making dinner. They had a nationally-known comedian there, Al Madrigal. Quite hilarious. There was a couple of children in the audience, so he had to really tone down his act, but that went very well. But since I went there, I missed something that I wish I really could have made, was congrats to Mr. Popiel, Jim Popiel. He was my Spanish teacher in high school, Jim Adlin, back in the old days. He used to take the athletes. We used to go to WLRO Radio, a little radio station in downtown Lorraine. When he was broadcasting, he'd always let us get on and talk news and talk local sports, so. They named Gammel King Baseball Field over him. Just a gem of a guy. Like I said, it's muy bueno, señor. He was my, he always told me muy malo, Teddy K., because I always came in late, so. But congratulations, Mr. Popiel, great job.
He taught you early.
Were you? He learned something.
Yep, he taught me how to be early. That's into my report, Commissioner.
Thank you. Joan Lawrie used to be on WLRO also.
Yes, she did.
Yes. We were at Jarvis Babcock's farm on Tuesday, was it Tuesday?
I think it was, yeah.
In celebration of Earth Day, and that was, the festivities were put together by the Ohio Agricultural Department, of which Bob Boggs is the director. And Bob is a former Ash Tabula County Commissioner. He also served as a state representative. And his comments after they unveiled the Ohio Preserved Farm plaque, which is in front of the house on State Route 162, thank you for the directions, Ron, is very nice, but what a great director he is at that department, I think, and congratulations to Governor Strickland for recognizing his talents. Also, at the festivities, was the Executive Director of the Office of Farmland Preservation, another former county commissioner, Mark Forney, who is from Monroe County. So I was pleased to see two of my former colleagues there, and that was a nice fitting for Earth Day, which is going to be followed up this Friday at the Boy Scout Camp at the Firelands Reservation at 4:00 PM. And Marcy Capter, a Congresswoman from the southern part of Lorraine County, is going to be on hand for that celebration. I don't have details with me, but they put together a similar conservation easement, and they got funding from Marcy and others, and it came through the Ohio Public Works Commission and the part that, the green part that Ron Twining and I are a part of, it's a six- or nine-person committee, and we give out those bonding monies. And so they got money through that, too, so we're pleased about that part of it. So while we're having development in some areas of the county, we're happy about that. There's some green preservation going on in other areas, too. So I think you ought to be impressed with your Board of Commissioners. You see where all they've been this week. We're representing you well. I know you want, you want to talk again?
Commissioner, wait a minute.
He wants to talk.
Well, wait, he can wait a minute.
Yes, he can.
Also, on Monday, because everybody will see this on Saturday, it's Workers Memorial Day, a vigil memorializing workers killed in, at work in the state of Ohio and Lorraine County in particular, will be at 12:00 noon on Monday in front of the Illyria Courthouse, and then 5:00 in Lorraine in front of their city hall. So if you'd like to join us, Commissioners, we'll be attending those.
And we have prepared little proclamations for each. Thank you, Commissioner Kalo. Did you wish to speak?
Yeah, I have one or two housekeeping issues. I know we have a little bit of time this morning. Two things, Commissioners. First, I haven't gotten all the updates I need for Project 10, but I know we have a couple of companies queued. Now, next meeting isn't until 1 May, and if we wait until 1 May, then I won't be able to use Wage Match on those Project 10 companies. I think I'd like to ask you to schedule a meeting, if you would, on Wednesday sometime.
No, how about the 29th on Tuesday? I'm in Columbus on Wednesday. Sorry.
Well, two of us can make it, correct? To approve?
Yeah, but three of us could be here.
I would dare have suggested that, Commissioner.
That's right. You wouldn't have. Can you have your stuff ready on Tuesday?
If you could give us to the afternoon, I certainly can make sure I tell them whatever's got to be queued, it's got to be done. I certainly can do that.
Can you come in Tuesday afternoon?
She's looking to share.
I don't have my schedule with me.
I don't either, but, you know, we can go, because it looks like we're going to have to take a break because the public meetings can't be moved up. So if we can check our schedules. I don't have, I don't have all the final stuff, but I know this stuff out there, and rather than waiting until Friday or Monday and then making, we might as well just try to schedule something now.
Great idea. Check it out.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the second issue is, clearly, everybody read the paper and the distressing news in the unemployment situation within Lorraine County and the growth in that. Just as an informational piece, I asked Rebecca to contact the Job and Family Services, Bureau of Employment Services over there, to see where our spike came from in our unemployment rate. It was, it was a big spike, and it was distressing to take a look at that, especially with all the hard work we're doing trying to create jobs. And there's some interesting analysis of what's going on, and it's not as dire as it appears, but I would like Rebecca just to give you a little bit of information on that unemployment number.
Good morning, Commissioners. When we got the latest information for March, it was really distressing, because we had gone up a percentage point from February in unemployment rates. And so after Jim asked me to call down to the state, I did give them a call, and they said that the unemployment was, while they would not release company names, it was clearly related to the automotive industry, and our small automotive-related companies are seeing a downtick, and that is due to the American axle strike that's going on in Michigan right now. And so not only are we being impacted here in Lorraine County, but throughout Ohio and Michigan, our small automotive companies are also being impacted by this. There's some hope this strike will be settled soon, and we should see those unemployment rates drop when people are called back to work. But that's the reason that we're now seeing that spike.
I just thought it was, was important that we, we looked at that and addressed that, because we are working so very hard to keep that number manageable, and then we want to see it go the other way. And I think the community needs to know that, that that's an enigma in the unemployment number, and it's impacting us from forces that we really can't deal with. So I hope that information helps you. I think Lorraine County's on the right track. We're working hard to continue the forward progress. And, and so that kind of negativity needs to be explained, and that kind of information, I think, needs to be explained. So if people are talking to you out there, I don't want them to think that we're not moving forward. I think that Lorraine County is progressing very nicely. We've been creating more jobs lately than, than we're losing, and it's a struggle. But when I read that newspaper, I was like, oh my God, what is going on here? You know, it felt like we got hit with a bulldozer. So I think that, that clearly, with that strike, after that strike, and people start returning to work, we should look at that number more fully, and then we can target our efforts a little bit better.
Thank you.
Court of Correspondents.
I move the hearing be waived.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
We'll go to our first public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am.
Which is the second public hearing on CHIP, Linda Blanchett from Community Development and Phyllis Dunlap from CT Consultants.
Thank you, Commissioners. Linda Blanchett, Lorraine County Community Development. We are here today because on April the 3rd, we had our first public hearing, and that was to inform the citizens about the CDBG program, how it could be used, what activities are eligible, and the other program requirements, and to make the public aware of all the CDBG eligible activities for CDBG as well as CHIP funding. Today, we're here to conduct the second public hearing, and this is to present the basic grant requirements and process the projects to be submitted for the CHIP grant application. And today, I have Phyllis Dunlap from CT Consultants, and she is going to explain all the activities that we are applying for, as we do have some changes. There are some new activities which we have not applied for in the past that, with the changes in our economy, I think these are some areas that we need to deal with, and Phyllis will explain more.
Thank you, Linda.
Good morning, Phyllis.
Good morning. The county had two hack meetings, Housing Advisory Committee meetings with members of different organizations in the community, which the Ohio Department of Development wanted to get together and talk about housing needs in the community. And out of that committee meeting, we had first an informational meeting, and then we had a brainstorming meeting. At the end of that second meeting, they submitted what they felt would be priorities to best meet, meet the needs of the low-income residents of the county. And from that, then, we determined what programs would be best to fit those needs. In this year's application, the county is proposing to put $306,000 in private owner rehab to do approximately eight homes. Private owner rehab is a program which brings the entire house up to the state standard. Home building repair, we're proposing to put $69,500 into that program, and that would address nine homes. That program is for immediate need, the furnace doesn't work, the hot water tank is out, the roof is leaking and causing damage, those type of things. Emergency monthly housing, this is a new program for the county. This program, we're proposing to put $13,500 in this program. It would have a maximum of $5,000 per household, and the purpose is to address foreclosure. It is our thought that the state has put lots of money into foreclosure prevention counseling already, and we are proposing to partner with an agency that is currently providing that counseling, and for them to recommend to us what a homeowner who is savable. Since they're already working with persons to help them save their house, it seems to us the best route is to provide funding to them, to then be able to get that person out of trouble and back on track. We hope to do three homes in this funding round.
Is that for owner occupied only?
Yes.
Good.
The next one is home repair septic. The state is allowing a higher limit under home repair septic in order to adjust septics, because they don't fit in the regular home repair program. Maximum in the regular home repair program would be $8,000 in hard costs, and I've forgotten. With soft costs, the maximum is $22,000 on the septic. So that would give us a little bit more leeway in addressing those issues, and we hope to do three of those. Fair housing will be coordinated through Lorraine County Urban League, as it has been in the past, and the amount for that is $2,000. We will be coordinating with Habitat for Humanity to build one home in the county, and there is $60,400 for administration. Also, I want to note in this application that the hack committee felt that there was a need to address Sheffield Township, that they wanted to give them priority in, in the rehab application. And so we're proposing to give them five extra points. We do a ranking system when we do the rehabs, and if you lived in Sheffield Township on the west side, it's the only way I could categorize. Sheffield Township is like on either side of Lorraine, we're doing the west side this time. They will get five extra points toward rehab, which will hopefully then give them a little edge in the application process. Is there any questions?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, Linda?
That's it.
Okay. I think we need to close the public hearing.
Questions from the audience? If there's anybody?
If there's no one from the audience who wishes to comment, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Then the next action is to approve the CHIP fiscal year 2008 application and submission to the State of Ohio Department of Development in the amount of $522,400. I will so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have five minutes before the next public hearing. Is there anyone?
Public comment. I don't know if you heard me or not. I'm sorry, I don't know if you heard me or not.
Come on up.
Yeah, sure.
We're going to do public comment.
Shirley, would you like to speak? They want to hear you.
Shirley R. Johnson over. And I just wanted to say that I do think it's a wonderful thing that the Boy Scout Camp has been made whatever it's been made, some kind of preservation. For years, back when my kids were, our kids were little, we hiked in that area, and we continued to hike as long as we could in the outdoors and on the hills. It's a wonderful place to bird, wonderful place to see wildflowers, so I'm glad it's going to be available.
Thank you for your comments, Shirley. Anyone else who wished to address the board? If not, we've just got a couple of minutes here until 10:15.
This is the tougher hearing on Catholic Healthcare Partners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's good to see you again. It's Mary Duffy from Peck, Schaefer &amp; Williams. We are bond counsel for the county's issuance of bonds for Catholic Healthcare Partners. You recall that two weeks ago, we had a public hearing regarding the refunding of certain County of Lorraine bonds issued for the benefit of Catholic Healthcare Partners and its nonprofit hospital affiliates. Today is the second piece of that puzzle. You recall that many of these bonds were issued as auction-rate securities, and that is a type of variable rate interest that is not dependent just on the credit of Catholic Healthcare Partners, but also on the credit of the bond insurance companies that insured those bonds. Unfortunately, because of the roiling markets and some choices that those insurance companies made, but nothing to do with the credit of the county or of Catholic Healthcare Partners, the interest rates on those securities have spiked, which of course is a problem for, for Catholic Healthcare Partners and, and in their provision of healthcare services at the lowest possible cost. That has caused them to restructure their auction-rate securities, and a portion of those are staying outstanding that were insured by AMBAQ, because those, at this point, have a pretty good interest rate. A portion of them are being refunded, and that was the, the subject of the public hearing two weeks ago. The third piece, or the second part of these, is that they're being remarketed at a fixed rate of interest. In connection with that remarketing, it has been necessary to amend the existing indentures of trust, to update some of the provisions that the market requires in order to accept those bonds as a fixed-rate bond, and that will be the, the first resolution before you. But the public hearing is with respect to the remarketing to a fixed rate of those bond issues. Specifically, it's the Series 2003 C1 and Series 2003 C2, County of Lorraine, Ohio, adjustable-rate hospital facilities revenue refunding bonds, and the Series 2006 A, B, and H of the adjustable-rate hospital facilities revenue bonds for Catholic Healthcare Partners from 2000, again, 2006. I can answer any questions about those bond issues, or about the public hearing, or about the changes to the, to the indentures, if, if anybody has those questions.
Does any of the board have questions?
No, thank you, Mary.
No.
Rebecca, you have a comment? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to let the board know that our bond counsel, Tom Anusko, has reviewed all the documentation. He did have a couple of questions, which Mary has answered to his satisfaction, so he has reviewed and given his approval as to form of all these documents.
Thank you, Rebecca. And that concludes your comments, Mary.
Yes, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Hearing, no further questions and/or comments. I'll move.
Close the hearing.
Is this a public hearing again?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Teresa, I'll move the hearing be closed.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
It does say hearing, and I'll move for approval.
Second.
Of the authorized amendment of certain lease and sublease with Catholic Healthcare Partners.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
And then now we're authorized in Lorraine County to execute and deliver a public hospital agencies agreement in connection with the revenue bonds. That's all part of the original motion?
Yes, there's two.
Or there's two?
There's two.
Okay. I'll move for that second resolution as well.
Okay.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
I see you have A and B.
And then, Commissioners, there was entries, I just want to make sure if it's on the agenda properly or not. There was also the resolution authorizing the amendment of the lease and sublease. Did we accomplish that two weeks ago?
That was number A, yes.
Excuse me?
Number A, on the agenda.
Oh, number A, and then the second one is authorizing the amendment to the indentures?
Correct.
She's trying to keep us straight.
Okay. I'm trying to keep myself straight.
We'll do this together. There were two separate resolutions.
Okay.
A and B, okay?
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, we're all squared away with our public hearings now. Our next action is at 11:00, the Investment Advisory Committee. Nothing more to come before I sit this night. I move.
Ma'am President, we did talk about scheduling a meeting.
Oh, well, but you didn't have the right information when you asked for it. Yes, we did, I'm sorry.
I checked my schedule. Tuesday, I have a Timoraine County Executive Board meeting at noon, so if you do it before that?
He wants to do it later. Can you do it later?
After that meeting?
If, is there an executive board meeting here, Commissioner?
Did you hear his question, Laura? He asked if the executive board meeting was here.
I guess so.
Yeah, I just want to make it as convenient for you as possible. If we could do it afterwards, to give them as much time to prepare those packages, that would really help out.
Okay, what time?
Two.
What works for the board? Where, where's your consideration?
Anytime, Tuesday afternoon is fine with me.
Whatever takes to get it done.
If you have a noon executive, do they meet for about two hours?
Probably not that long.
That's a more important question. They bring lunch?
I'm going to make sure. He's going to go to their meeting.
Would 2:00 o'clock work for you?
Sure.
Okay.
Do we need a motion? It's Tuesday, the April.
The 29th.
29th. Yep, two.
Madam Clerk, this would be a special meeting to consider potential Project 10 applications for incumbent worker training dollars.
Do we need a motion for that?
I don't know if you need a motion, or, that's up to Madam Clerk, how we schedule it. You going to list it as a special meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Then I do. We won't be doing any other business.
No, I, I, no. I would just, I would just ask that we just, if, if we have them ready. If not, I'll notify you sufficiently beforehand, so that I don't waste your time.
Okay, thank you. I move the hearing.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Thank you.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second-largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings. Children aren't educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and obviously stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education, or they hadn't, hadn't any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So that's what really got us motivated to look into this and, and do something about it.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to 4, teaching them to walk the streets safely is, is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County, and, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4 part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely, and we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets. We have actual working stoplights. We have the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work. We have operational railroad crossings. We also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations, so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children, when you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60, and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know, does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say left, right, left, behind you, in front of you, once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us, and we even had one child that came up to us and said, you know what, Ms. Fenske, we were going to cross the street the other day, and we remembered, look left, look right, look left. So that was very rewarding. And so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light, and then our railroad crossing signals actually work. So they're just like, oh, ooh. And we get up there and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions, you know, we'll say, well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it? Because you're fast and I'm fast, and we can run. And of course, they're, they're very enthusiastic, and no, we shouldn't do this. So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks, and just because one goes by and the signal stops, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction.
We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to four. Teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorain County, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to four part of that. This program is to stop that, to help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely. And we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house. Simulated sidewalks, simulated streets, we have actual working stoplights, we have the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work, we have operational railroad crossings, we also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations, so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children, when you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60, and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know, does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So basically, we have the whole class interacting. So if they say left, right, left, behind you, in front of you, once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So we've had many teachers and many principals tell us, and we even had one child that came up to us and said, you know what, Ms. Spansky, we were going to cross the street the other day, and we remembered, look left, look right, look left. So that was very rewarding. And so I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light, and then our railroad crossing signals actually work. So they're just like, oh, ooh! And we get up there and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions, you know, we'll say, well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it? Because you're fast and I'm fast, and we can run. And of course, they're very enthusiastic, and no, we shouldn't do this. So we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks. And just because one goes by and the signal stops, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks, and they wait till those signals stop, and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways, and they should never run across the railroad tracks, they should walk and continue to look both ways, because it's not safe. And they could fall, they could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone, it could be very dangerous, because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming, because they are so small. And as you know, some of those tracks are very large, and you're talking in kindergarten through fourth grade, some of those children are very small children. The main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision. So make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous. And the same thing with trains. We tell them that train could take, you know, forever, it's way down there, but we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use two different videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and first grade, and that is Auto the Auto, put out by AAA.
Hi, kids! A lot of times you have to walk to get to places. And when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no! Those kids are walking the wrong way! That's dangerous! I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first. And don't get squished flat by a car. That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking. Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat. Who's right, Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without...
The second video, we show second, third, and fourth grade. And it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda, and they developed the first humanoid robot.
What's up, Asimo? How's it going? Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo.
How come you dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Step in Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming.
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this. They relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Auto, who is an animated automobile. And he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing, and he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross, because a lot of children at schools have parked cars, he goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So they both cover the basic skills. One is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups. Our response has been amazing, not only from the children. We have received numerous cards. We have, I have a whole box of thank yous from children from the schools that, where we have, that have participated in our workshop. We've had nothing but a positive response back throughout the communities that we visited this year.
I think it was really nice, because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety, and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street. Um, I saw that we could, like, know what to do when there's like cars coming, not to go in the middle of the road, so you don't get hurt. You have to look left, right, left, behind the shoulder, and then straight. If they don't know how to stop at sidewalks, then I'll tell them how to. If they don't know how to cross without sidewalks, I'll tell them how to do that, too, because that's what we learned. Um, I think that it was good, because I didn't feel like you had to look five ways, which were left, right, left, and then over your shoulder, and then ahead of you. I thought that crossing the road was really good for little kids, if they don't know what to do by crossing the road.
It's a good idea, because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection, what happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars? Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to safety town, and they learn left, look left, look right, look left again, and they gull. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did safety town, and I still catch him flying across the street. And all I have to do is say, Matthew, remember Asimo? And he stops, and he thinks, and he does all the steps that he was taught in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them, now knowing, you know, what to do, and kind of even additional things that they maybe not have, may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten. They start out learning all those safety rules. Then as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe. We don't have to follow those rules anymore, we can do what we want, we can take a chance and run across the road. And I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful. We still have to follow the signs, we still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst. We tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them. So I think it was a good review. I think it was done in a fun, learning way, and the kids really enjoyed it. We're very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.
In 1787, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In 1803, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorain County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present 88, the land we know as Lorain County went through several changes. Until 1810, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorain County in 1822, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorain County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial. And although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorain County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorain County's 21 townships. In 1807, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in 1807, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which 20 years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorain. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorain when the city was incorporated in 1874. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In 1894, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorain's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In 1813, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area, and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by 1880 known as Fields Corners, and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In 1810, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in 1813, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in 1823, while the township was in transition to the new Lorain County. Amherst's township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in 1811 to the Beaver Creek. By 1815, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskiville, today the intersection of Roots 58 and 113, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By 1836, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in 1873, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In 1909, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In 1917, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorain County's 21 townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In 1814, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in 1911, with the remainder of the township becoming the Village of Avon in 1917. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in 1815 and 16. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until 1824, when the newly-elected Lorain County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the 1822 reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County, and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake, and the south, the Village of Sheffield. In 1816, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range 19. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding Helm to his family name. Like the old Saxon ham, the suffix meant home. The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July 4, 1817. The village of Brownhelm Mills located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rossen in 1816. Ten years later, the Rossens were forced to build a grist mill, or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village, the locals called Rossenville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In 1877, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossenville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Alariah Township, Carlisle was settled in 1816 by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorain County was being organized in 1822, Carlisle Township became its own entity. La Porte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In 1840, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorain County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township, as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over 10,000 acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Alariah, and the city, which also bears his family name. In 1817, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed, and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets, and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the 20th century. In 1822, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorain County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Alariah as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base, as well as the center of government for Lorain County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero, French general Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation, and in the winter of 1817, moved from New York State to the 160 acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton, and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in 1827. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in 1818, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling, or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace, and in fact, was the nation's in fact was the nation's leader in cheese production from 1870 to 1900. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, "The Spirit of Seventy-Six." In 1818, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laboree, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by 1822, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In 1824, when Lorraine County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township that had been first settled in 1818 requested detachment from Black River Township in 1825. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in 1833 and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipard and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only co-ed but also multiracial and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in 1992, as New Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In 1820, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of 1818. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of 1825. The first religious service was held in 1826, and the first school was in session in the summer of 1829. The township's first post office put the emphasis on "post" and not "the office." As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorraine County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of 1820, Abner Loveland Jr. became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Sr. had arrived and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of 1823, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorraine County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in 1813, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of 1812. By 1820, the land was surveyed and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of 1821. By 1831, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporated township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. La Grange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of 1825 established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of 1826, 14 more settlers had arrived. The name La Grange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In 1827, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of La Grange. By 1875, the center had grown into a village also incorporated as La Grange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcock's, who built the first frame house in 1833. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In 1835, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of 1836. When the first post office was established in 1835, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In 1852, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in 1891. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of 1832 to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by 1835, the commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of 1836. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By 1880, close to 700 citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester's center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.
Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Aleria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hear your dog calling.
Dogs call.
Good morning and welcome to the April 24 meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Today's meeting marks the third anniversary of weekly presentations of dogs from the Lorraine County kennel. Nearly 100 dogs have found new homes and families since that first presentation. This is a little letter from Buddy addressed to the board. It says, "On behalf of my canine cousins, as the first lucky dog to be shown, I want to say a big and loud thank you to the Lorraine County Commissioners, the wonderful wardens and the staff, and everyone who makes this possible," and it's signed as best he can, "my best friend Buddy." And that's Hal's dog, Hal, who does our meetings. Hal, you got a picture of your best friend Buddy back there? I think you need to show it. How do you like that? A dog that writes thank you letters. It says, "You make me happy." I think he brought Hal a lot of pleasure. Okay, Ted.
This week, our featured pet is a Chow mix pup that was found on 36th Street in Lorraine. Really great dog. Come here. Oh, you're busy looking at him, huh? Come here. Get a good picture of you. Come on, turn around. Turn around. Come on, turn around. There you go. Good boy.
Oh, he's picking up his paw, too.
Paw? Paw? There you go. Good boy. Oh. How you doing there, puppy? Hi there.
Kisses.
Great pet. He'll be available at 3 o'clock on Saturday. Please stop by. We're having a great time adopting these dogs out, and they're some really good pets.
Thank you, Commissioner Kallo. And thank you, Hal, for that little love letter from Buddy. A thought for today, we do not remember days but moments. Life moves too fast, so enjoy your precious moments.
And Madam Clerk, I believe you're on.
Today at 11 o'clock, we're going to have an IAC meeting under public hearings at 10 o'clock. It will be the second public hearing on the chip. And at 10:15 will be the TEPF hearing on the Catholic Healthcare Partners. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez.
Christmas comes once in a while. I don't need an executive session today.
Wow. Did you take your temperature this morning?
Yes, I did, and we don't have any personnel actions. Unless, I know there's been some discussion on the, some ongoing negotiations out to sheriffs. If you want me to update you on that, we can do that. The exec can take five minutes and do that if you'd like. I know I spoke to Madam Commissioner on that. Would you like to just talk about that, or is everything okay with that?
I think it's okay.
Okay, then I'm fine. Mr. Twining, do you have anything for executive session?
No.
You don't have a personnel summary sheet then either.
No, ma'am.
Okay, so no action on number nine. Mark that down as a red letter.
I have it circled. Approve and waive the reading of the same for Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting minutes for April 17, 2008.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, authorize various purchase of service agreements for summer camp experiments for low-income children using TANF funds effective June 16 through August 1, 2008. Authorize director to execute on behalf of the boy with prosecutor's approval as to form for one common ground Oberlin for 210 camp placements in the amount of $36,750. Horizon's Activity Center will fund for 1,120 camp placements at five Lorraine County sites in the amount of $184,800. And Boys and Girls Global Lorraine County Oberlin for 975 camp placement at six Lorraine County sites in the amount of $188,545.31.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, authorize various purchase of service agreements for summer camp experiments for low-income children using TANF funds effective June 16 through August 1, 2008. Authorize director to execute on behalf of the boy with prosecutor's approval as to form for one common ground Oberlin for 210 camp placements in the amount of $36,750. Horizon's Activity Center will fund for 1,120 camp placements at five Lorraine County sites in the amount of $184,800. And Boys and Girls Global Lorraine County Oberlin for 975 camp placement at six Lorraine County sites in the amount of $188,545.31.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, approve addendum three to extend airmark food service agreement providing inmate meals for county jail. Effective retroactive February 1, 2008 through January 31, 2009, increasing meal price based on population range from $1.10 to $1.55.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion.
Sheriff, did you want to comment on this? It's just a...
Do you see the consumer price increase? Imagine that, cost of food's going up, huh?
And it depends on the number of inmates as well. Thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Administrator?
Thank you. Commissioners, a couple of brief things this morning. Yesterday, we finalized the RFP for the Children Family First Council and the Help Me Grow program that you had some concerns about back in November and December. We were having a lot of problems getting bills paid and things done. I want to tell you that we've met with the service coordinators now, I would say, around about five times. We've had very, very deep participation and in a real collaborative effort. We have revised a lot of procedures and there was a lot of, what I can only term is too much bureaucracy in the whole process that was going on. We've been trying to streamline it, make it simple for people to operate under, and also find efficiencies and better outcomes with the way we're doing our applications. So the RFPs will be going out next week. The group as a whole, I think, are very, very satisfied with the way the process has gone. There's going to be some changes that will probably exclude a few people from being service coordinators in the future because we just simply have too many service coordinators, and that's one of the problems we had. But it's going to be a much more competitive process, but it'll also be streamlined to the point where it'll be easier for those people to operate under the guidelines that are out there. To Mr. Kallo, we did away with a lot of over-governing.
Thank you.
On the process.
Well, as long as you get the services. Help Me Grow's a heck of a program, and it ran into a couple of pitfalls, bumps in the road, so I'm glad we were able to address that and make sure we're getting the services done and the vendors paid.
Well, we became our own worst enemy. We were thinking we're doing a great job every time we added six more pages to the RFP or six more rules to, you know, how to spend something when it didn't need to be there. Most of the problems we're having, I'm not embarrassed to admit because it's a distance from my office, but we were making the rules that we couldn't live with. When we finally dove deep into the regulations and met with the state a few times and then talked to the people who are actually putting the service onto the deck plate, we discovered that we didn't need all of that, and we've been able to thin it down and get a better process. I'm telling you all this because when the RFPs go out, you may be getting a little bit of pushback from some people that are service coordinators now that know that they may not be service coordinators in the future. Currently, we have six service coordinators. Six?
Five.
Does that count the one that we unfunded in December?
That counts that one. It does not count the one that does the second opinion.
Okay. Okay, six. Our thinking is that, well, our thinking is the county would be better served, actually the most efficient way, but it would be too risky, would be one. We think we're going to be better served, which is three service coordinators, because we've got too many territory areas diced up, too many people trying to hire people on a limited amount of money, and there's a lot of overlapping issues. So we're going to be going through that process. Ultimately, the Children Family First Council and their advisory role will work with that, but the final decision comes at the administrative agent, which is the Board of Commissioners with regard to that. They are already aware that there's going to be, I think they called it a thinning of the herd yesterday after we had that long meeting, so you may be getting some people calling you. So I want to make you aware that that process is ongoing, but no decision's been made. These are just recommendations that we're looking at, but we did inform the group of how aggressive it may become this spring when the RFPs are reviewed. I think we dropped 70% of the RFP, came off the table, we thinned it down to 60%?
Yeah, probably close to 60. And I think the RFP, I didn't get the date yet, but I think that's two weeks before they go out, not next week.
Well, thank you for streamlining the process for us.
Well, it was all of us. We do everything as a team up here. So, you know, Ron and I, although it was a learning experience for Ron, I've worked with this before, and, you know, Ron, I told Ron it was going to be fun, but he didn't believe me, and I don't think he still does.
And I still don't.
I wonder why.
Also, Commissioners, for the second year in a row, you are finalists for a Team Neo Award in Northeast Ohio. Ron, you want to tell us, tell the board a little bit about what they're finalists for with Team Neo this year for the awards that were coming up in May? You don't remember?
I think you caught him off guard, Jim.
I did.
We made, I believe, through the Growth Partnership, 14 applications, and I don't know what we're finalists in.
We're finalists in the retention and expansion area for REAL Teams. We've been, there was, this year they received a tremendous amount of applications. Last year was a little thinner because it was the first year of the awards. We were, sorry, Ron, we were successful at getting the Collaboration Award for the Lorraine County Growth Partnership last year, which is, I believe, their most prestigious award. This year, we did submit about 14 applications, and we submitted various entities within Lorraine County, and we didn't even tell them. And last year, Lori, I don't know if you attended last year, but I think Ted and Betty, you both attended last year?
Yes, we did.
And we'll, we'll be getting a table, and we will have twelve seats down there. So we would love for all of us to go down there, and the, the college is buying a table. And altogether, we'll have about twenty-four seats, and if we need more, we'll buy more because we're just going to go down there because we know we're wonderful, and we're just going to make sure they continue to know that down there. So congratulations on being a finalist and supporting the real team process. And my last issue is, last week, I spoke to you at length concerning the Port Authority. I'm pleased to inform that Lorraine County Port Authority did approve a three-point-eight million dollar loan for Global Green to be, relocate their operation here and begin providing jobs and opportunities for Lorraine County. It's an exciting, it's an exciting partnership with the Port Authority and with the county commissioners, because the Port Authority really cannot exist without the support of the county commissioners. Both Lori and Ted had an opportunity to be there, and I thought we had a tremendous meeting with the Board of Authority, thought it went really well. With that, I do have a resolution here, the request from the board, that we do an additional line of credit for, for the Port Authority. We have a two-million-dollar loan in the queue to National Bronze, and that's a project that you guys have often on been intimately aware of as we work with them in the last two years. They haven't, they have not asked for their, their funding yet because they're not ready to go until, it's going to be another several months before they want to draw the funding, but they...
April bonus.
April.
Yeah, another year.
But they've been approved and bankable for the two-million-dollar bond. So that's, that's queued. With the three-point-eight million to this new company, we are, we're, we're out of funds. We're not able to grant any more bonding. In fact, the three-point-eight is right on the fringe of what the Port Authority can do right now.
Tom, what are you asking for, Jim, this time through? Because I've got one pending, it'll be about a million eight, hopefully in the next hundred and twenty days, I'm working on also.
Well...
I brought that up a couple of times.
We're, we're going to request five-million-dollar line of credit. That the board allow us to use the, the strength of the county to gain a letter of credit from a bank and to do an additional five million dollars worth of, worth of lending. The, we need two-point-two million just to meet current, I won't call them obligation, because obviously, we don't have to give them the, the bond. So it's not really an obligation, but how about a commitment, a current commitment, so we can get those companies up and running? That would leave us about two-point-four, two-point-five million. I'm just rounding the numbers in additional capacity. If you, if you are successful, Commissioner, bringing us that additional deal, and it is at one-point-eight million, we'll probably be back here, because that'll only leave us eight or nine-hundred thousand dollars.
Well, again, then, once the line of credit goes out and the bonds are sold...
If we have the five deals, then our reserves full. And then we, then we can, we may be done. It, it all depends on timing with National Bronze and how many deals can, if we get three deals in the hopper before the end of the year, it, it could be a problem. So the, but I just want to give you a status of the Port Authority and where we stand. It'll probably take another thirty days to get all the issuance done and the work done on, on the bonds for, for Global Green. The good thing is that National Bronze was waiting on their financing, and that gave us a little breathing room to do this work right now. I will pass you this res, to Madam Clerk. These resolutions, this copy's there for the board.
It says, "A resolution expressing support for Lorraine County Port Authority to increase its program reserve letter of credit to an amount not to exceed eight million or to secure an additional letter of credit in amount not to exceed five million."
Correct, Commissioner.
Also move for approval. Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. You know, once again, without the support of, of the Board of Commissioners, whether I or I were working with the Port Authority, they would, they would not be able to be a viable operation. And sometimes, again, I've said this many times in this room, you guys don't get credit for all the things you do. While the Port Authority may be a separate operation, it doesn't exist without the goodwill and support and the vision of this board. Thank you very much, and that's conclude my comments this morning.
Thank you. Mr. Ennis?
I also do not need an executive session. Jim and I just did that because we, we know you have to stay for the IAC at eleven o'clock.
All right.
I have nothing else to report.
Commissioner Lori?
It's a pretty busy week, like Jim said. Monday, we attended the Port Authority meeting. Also this week, Betty Sutton came to the Steelworkers Local eleven oh four to talk about the trade agreement with Columbia. And one of the Steelworker representative, Nellie, had gone to Columbia about ten years ago, and some of the horror stories that she had talked about, I mean, it could make you cry. So I'm hoping that, that trade agreement will not go through. And I think, is it Voinovich? We still need to, we need to call Voinovich and tell him absolutely do not pass this trade agreement. And then the three of us also attended the land conservation Babcock, Babcock Farm?
Babcock.
Babcock, Babcock Farm, almost a thousand acres. They'll stay in its natural state forever and ever, and it's, it was a beautiful farm, and I was happy to be a part of that. And I think, Betty, you have a picture of that, don't you?
Yeah, I know. We'll share it.
Okay.
And Mark says, asked me to share it with you two.
Okay. And that's the end of my comments.
Short of mine. That means we'll be out of here even sooner.
I'm going to ask what you think.
Yeah, you're right. I know. Commissioner told me I'm here all day with you. After the Babcock dedication with the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, I hot-tailed it back to make the state of the city for the North Coast Chamber of Commerce, which was for Avon, Avon Lake, Sheffield and Sheffield Lake. Like commend Mayor Hunter from Sheffield Village and Mayor Zuber from Avon Lake, their first state of the cities. They did a very nice job. And the overall theme, it was nice to hear all four of them speaking, was cooperation, working together, visiting Ford together. The people from Ford said they'd never had that type of cooperation before even, that anybody even cared, because as we remember in the past, there are a lot of fights and arguments about territory out there. Our community bump was involved with that to a degree, helping out, right Rebecca? But, I mean, it seems to be a breath of fresh air out there, and they're really working hard to almost regionalize their Ford community, so it was very nice. Good news, the energy bill finally passed. Overall, happy with how it turned out. It's a shame it took them so long, but Governor Strickland stuck to his guns, threatened a veto, and they came out with his essentially very good plan. We all know that electric rates are going up to some degree, but they made sure they put a cap on it. About the only part in renewables that I wasn't happy with was the large utility companies are able to buy non-renewable products if the cost is three percent less than using the renewable. But over the years, as the benchmarks increase, the renewables, I think. So I think it's going to slow us down a little bit in some of the heavy development, but I think some of the smaller renewable companies and such, the Global Green Technologies and the small turbine people, I think we've got a real niche there we can start filling right away.
Do we have copies that are completed?
Yes, I have. I don't know, eighty or ninety pages I've got. I'll forward it to you.
Yeah, that'd be great, thanks. Because I know there were so many revisions I stopped printing out.
Berryman, Ohio, sent me the recap sheet, and then State Representative Baird, who I'd been speaking to since last week, just about daily or every other day, sent me the finished completed. So also, and chance to attend, I had a real nice event, the Student Senate from Lorraine County Community College last night did an event for cerebral palsy. They did a very nice job. Pogie did a great job making dinner. They had a nationally-known comedian there, Al Madrigal. Quite hilarious. There was a couple of children in the audience, so he had to really tone down his act, but that went very well. But since I went there, I missed something that I wish I really could have made, was congrats to Mr. Popiel, Jim Popiel. He was my Spanish teacher in high school, Jim Adlin, back in the old days. He used to take the athletes, we used to go WLRO radio, little radio station in downtown Lorraine. When he was broadcasting, he'd always let us get on and talk news and talk local sports, so. They named the Emerald King Baseball Field over him. Just a gem of a guy. Like I said, it's muy bueno, senor. He was my, he always told me muy malo, Teddy K, because I always came in late, so. But congratulations, Mr. Popiel, great job.
He taught you early.
Yep, he taught me how to be early. That's into my report, Commissioner.
Thank you. Joan Lawrie used to be on WLRO also.
Yes, she did.
Yes, mhm. We were at Jarvis Babcock's farm on Tuesday. Was it Tuesday?
I think it was, yeah.
In celebration of Earth Day. And that was, the festivities were put together by the Ohio Agricultural Department, of which Bob Boggs is the director. And Bob is a former Ash Tabula County Commissioner. He also served as a state representative. And his comments after they unveiled the Ohio Preserved Farm plaque, which is in front of the house on State Route one sixty-two, thank you for the directions, Ron, is very nice. But what a great director he is at that department, I think, and congratulations to Governor Strickland for recognizing his talents. Also, at the festivities was the Executive Director of the Office of Farmland Preservation, another former county commissioner, Mark Forney, who is from Monroe County. So I, I was pleased to see two of my former colleagues there. And that was a, a nice fitting for Earth Day, which is going to be followed up this Friday at the Boy Scout Camp at the Firelands Reservation at four PM. And Marcy Capter, Congresswoman from the southern part of Lorraine County, is going to be on hand for that celebration. I don't have details with me, but they put together a similar conservation easement, and they got funding from Marcy and others. And it came through the Ohio Public Works Commission and the part that, the green part that Ron Twining and I are a part of. It's a six- or nine-person committee, and we give out the, those bonding monies. And so they got money through that, too, so we're pleased about that part of it. So while we're having development in some areas of the county, and we're happy about that, there's some green preservation going on in other areas, too. So I think you ought to be impressed with your Board of Commissioners. You see where all they've been this week. We're, we're representing you well. I know you want, you want to talk again?
Commissioner, wait a minute.
He wants to talk.
Well, wait, he can wait a minute.
Yes, he can.
Also, on Monday, because everybody will see this on Saturday, it's Workers Memorial Day, a vigil memorializing workers killed in, at work in the state of Ohio and Lorraine County in particular. It'll be at twelve o'clock noon on Monday in front of the O'Leary Courthouse, and then five o'clock in Lorraine in front of their city hall. So if you'd like to join us, Commissioners, we'll be attending those.
And we have prepared little proclamations for each. Thank you, Commissioner Kayla. Did you wish to speak?
I, I have one or two housekeeping issues. I know we have a little bit of time this morning. Two things, Commissioners. First, I, I haven't gotten all the updates I need for Project Ten, but I know we have a couple of companies queued. And our next meeting isn't until one May, and if we wait until one May, then I won't be able to use Wage Match on those Project Ten companies. I think I'd like to ask you to schedule a meeting, if you would, on Wednesday sometime.
No, how about the twenty-ninth on Tuesday? I'm in Columbus on Wednesday. Sorry.
Well, two of us can make it, correct, to approve?
Yeah, but three of us could be here.
I wouldn't dare have suggested that, Commissioner.
That's right. You wouldn't have. Can you have your stuff ready on Tuesday?
I, if you could give us to the afternoon, I, I certainly can make sure I tell them whatever's got to be queued, it's got to be done. I certainly can do that.
Can you come on Tuesday afternoon?
She's looking to share.
I don't have my schedule with me.
I, I don't either, but you know, we can go, because it looks like we're going to have to take a break, because the public meetings can't be moved up. So if we can check our schedules, I, you know, I don't have, I don't have all the final stuff, but I know this stuff out there. And I, rather than waiting until Friday or Monday and then making, we might as well just try to schedule something now.
Great idea. Check it out.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the, the second issue is, clearly, everybody read the paper and the distressing news in the unemployment situation within Lorraine County and the growth in that. As, just as an informational piece, I asked Rebecca to contact the employment, Job and Family Services, the Bureau of Employment Services over there, to see where our spike came from in our unemployment rate. It was, it was a big spike, and it was distressing to take a look at that, especially with all the hard work we're doing trying to create jobs. And there's some interesting analysis of what's going on, and it's not as dire as it appears, but I would like Rebecca just to give you a little bit of information on that unemployment number.
Good morning, Commissioners. When we got the latest information for March, it was really distressing because we had gone up a percentage point from February in unemployment rates. And so after Jim asked me to, to call down to the state, I did give them a call, and they said that the unemployment was, while they would not release company names, it was clearly related to the automotive industry. And our small automotive-related companies are seeing a downtick, and that is due to the American axle strike that's going on in Michigan right now. And so not only are we being impacted here in Lorraine County, but throughout Ohio and Michigan, our small automotive companies are also being impacted by this. There's some hope the strike will be settled soon, and we should see those unemployment rates drop when people are called back to work. But that's the reason that we're now seeing that spike.
I, I just thought it was, was important that we, we looked at that and addressed that, because we are working so very hard to keep that number manageable, and then we want to see it go the other way. And I think the community needs to know that, that that's an enigma in the unemployment number, and it's, it's impacting us from forces that we really can't deal with. So I hope that information helps you. I think Lorraine County's on the right track. We're working hard to continue the forward progress. And, and so that kind of negativity needs to be explained, and that kind of information, I think, needs to be explained. So if people are talking out there, I, I don't want them to think that we're not moving forward. I think that Lorraine County is progressing very nicely. We've been creating more jobs lately than, than we're losing, and it's a struggle. But when I read that, that newspaper, I was like, oh my God, what is going on here? And, you know, it felt like we got hit with a bulldozer. So I think that, that clearly, with that strike, after that strike and people start returning to work, we should look at that number more fully, and then we can target our efforts a little bit better.
Thank you. I'm overly relieved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
We'll go to our first public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am.
Which is the second public hearing on CHIP. Linda Blanchett from Community Development and Phyllis Dunlap from CT Consultants.
Thank you, Commissioners. Linda Blanchett, Lorraine County Community Development. We're here today because on April the third, we had our first public hearing, and that was to inform the citizens about the CDBG program. How it could be used, what activities are eligible, and the other program requirements, and to make the public aware of all the CDBG eligible activities for CDBG as well as CHIP funding. Today, we're here to conduct the second public hearing, and this is to present the basic grant requirements and process the projects to be submitted for the CHIP grant application. And today, I have Phyllis Dunlap from CT Consultants, and she is going to explain all the activities that we are applying for. As we do have some changes, there are some new activities which we have not applied for in the past that, with the changes in our economy, I think these are some areas that we need to deal with, and Phyllis will explain more.
Thank you, Linda. Good morning, Phyllis.
Good morning. The county had two hack meetings, Housing Advisory Committee meetings with members of different organizations in the community, which the Ohio Department of Development wanted to get together and talk about housing needs in the community. And out of that committee meeting, we had first an informational meeting, and then we had a brainstorming meeting. At the end of that second meeting, they submitted what they felt would be priorities to best meet, meet the needs of the low-income residents of the county. And from that, then, we determined what programs would be best to fit those needs. In this year's application, the county is proposing to put three-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars in private owner rehab to do approximately eight homes. Private owner rehab is a program which brings the entire house up to the state standard. Home building repair, we're proposing to put sixty-nine thousand five hundred dollars into that program, and that would address nine homes. That program is for immediate need. The furnace doesn't work, the hot water tank is out, the roof is leaking and causing damage, those type of things. Emergency monthly housing, this is a new program for the county. This program, we're proposing to put thirteen thousand five hundred dollars in this program. It would have a maximum of five thousand dollars per household, and the purpose is to address foreclosure. It is our thought that the state has put lots of money into foreclosure prevention counseling already, and we're proposing to partner with an agency that is currently providing that counseling. And for them to recommend to us what a homeowner who is savable. Since they're already working with persons to help them save their house, it seems to us the best route is to provide funding to them to then be able to get that person out of trouble and back on track. We hope to do three homes in this opening round.
Is that for owner occupied only?
Yes. Yes.
Good.
The next one is home repair septic. The state is allowing a higher limit under home repair septic in order to adjust septics because they don't fit in the regular home repair program. Maximum in the regular home repair program would be $8,000 in hard costs and I've forgotten. With soft costs, the maximum is $22,000 on the septic. So, that would give us a little bit more leeway in addressing those issues and we hope to do three of those. Fair housing will be coordinated through Lorraine County Urban League as it has been in the past and the amount for that is $2,000. We will be coordinating with Habitat for Humanity to build one home in the county and there is $60,400 for administration. Also, I want to note in this application that the HAC committee felt that there was a need to address Sheffield Township, that they wanted to give them priority in the rehab application. And so, we're proposing to give them five extra points. We do a ranking system when we do the rehabs. And if you lived in Sheffield Township on the west side, it's the only way I could categorize. Sheffield Township is like on either side of Lorraine, we're doing the west side this time. They will get five extra points toward rehab, which will hopefully then give them a little edge in the application process. Is there any questions?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, Linda?
That's it.
Okay, I think we need to close the public hearing.
Questions from the audience? Does anybody?
If there's no one from the audience who wishes to comment, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Then the next action is to approve the CHIP fiscal year 2008 application and submission to the State of Ohio Department of Development in the amount of $522,400. I will so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have five minutes before the next public hearing, is there anyone?
I don't know if you heard me or not. I'm sorry, I didn't know if you heard me or not.
Ted, I listen to every word that goes in your mouth.
Yeah, sure.
We're gonna do a quick comment.
Shirley, would you like to speak? They want to hear you.
Shirley R. Johnson-Ogden, I just wanted to say that I do think it's a wonderful thing that the Boy Scout Camp has been made, whatever it's been made, some kind of preservation. For years, back when my kids, our kids were little, we hiked in that area and we continued to hike as long as we could in the outdoors and on the hills. It's a wonderful place to bird, wonderful place to see wildflowers, so I'm glad it's going to be available.
Thank you for your comments, Shirley. Anyone else who wished to address the board? If not, we've just got a couple of minutes here until 10:15.
This is the tougher hearing on Catholic Healthcare Partners. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's good to see you again. It's Mary Duffy from Pex Schaefer &amp; Williams. We are bond counsel for the county's issuance of bonds for Catholic Healthcare Partners. You recall that two weeks ago, we had a public hearing regarding the refunding of certain County of Lorraine bonds issued for the benefit of Catholic Healthcare Partners and its nonprofit hospital affiliates. Today is the second piece of that puzzle. You recall that many of these bonds were issued as auction rate securities and that is a type of variable rate interest that is not dependent just on the credit of Catholic Healthcare Partners, but also on the credit of the bond insurance companies that insured those bonds. Unfortunately, because of the roiling markets and some choices that those insurance companies made, but nothing to do with the credit of the county or of Catholic Healthcare Partners, the interest rates on those securities have spiked, which of course is a problem for Catholic Healthcare Partners and in their provision of healthcare services at the lowest possible cost. That has caused them to restructure their auction rate securities and a portion of those are staying outstanding that were insured by AMBA because those, at this point, have a pretty good interest rate. A portion of them are being refunded and that was the subject of the public hearing two weeks ago. The third piece, or the second part of these, is that they're being remarketed at a fixed rate of interest. In connection with that remarketing, it has been necessary to amend the existing indentures of trust to update some of the provisions that the market requires in order to accept those bonds as a fixed rate bond. And that will be the first resolution before you. But the public hearing is with respect to the remarketing to a fixed rate of those bond issues. Specifically, it's the Series 2003 C1 and Series 2003 C2 County of Lorraine, Ohio Adjustable Rate Hospital Facilities Revenue Refunding Bonds and the Series 2006 A, B, and H of the Adjustable Rate Hospital Facilities Revenue Bonds for Catholic Healthcare Partners from 2000, again, 2006. I can answer any questions about those bond issues or about the public hearing or about the changes to the indentures, if anybody has those questions.
Does any of the board have questions, Ms. Mary?
Thank you, Mary.
No.
Rebecca, you have a comment?
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to let the board know that our bond counsel, Tom Anusko, has reviewed all the documentation. He did have a couple of questions, which Mary has answered to his satisfaction, so he has reviewed and given his approval as to form of all these documents.
Thank you, Rebecca. And that concludes your comments, Mary?
Yes, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Hearing no further questions and/or comments, I'll move, is this a public hearing again? Okay, Teresa, I'll move the hearing be closed.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
It does say hearing and I'll move for approval.
Second.
Of the authorized amendment of certain lease and sublease with Catholic Healthcare Partners?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
And then now we're authorized in Lorraine County to execute and deliver a public hospital agencies agreement in connection with the revenue bonds.
That's all part of the original motion?
Yes, there's two.
Or there's two?
There's two.
Okay, I'll move for that second resolution as well.
Okay.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Aye.
I see you have A and B.
And then, Commissioners, there was entries, I just want to make sure if it's on the agenda properly or not. There was also the resolution authorizing the amendment of the lease and sublease. Did we accomplish that two weeks ago?
That was number A, yes.
Excuse me?
Number A on the agenda.
Oh, number A, and then the second one is authorizing the amendment to the indentures?
Correct.
She's trying to keep us straight.
Okay. I'm trying to keep myself straight.
We'll do this together. There were two separate resolutions.
Okay.
A and B, okay?
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, we're all squared away with our public hearings now. Our next action is at 11:00, the Investment Advisory Committee. Nothing more to come before I set this time. I move...
Commissioner? I didn't mean to interrupt you, Madam President, but we did talk about scheduling a meeting.
Oh, well, but you didn't have the right information when you asked for it. Yes, we did, I'm sorry.
I checked my schedule, Tuesday I have a Tim Lorraine County Executive Board meeting at noon, so if you do it before that or after that?
He wants to do it later. Can you do it later?
After that meeting?
Is there an executive board meeting here, Commissioner?
Did you hear his question, Lori? He asked if the executive board meeting was here.
I believe so.
Yeah, I just want to make it as convenient for you as possible. If we could do it afterwards to give them as much time to prepare those packages, that would really help out.
Okay, what time?
Two?
What works for the board, where is your consideration?
Anytime, Tuesday afternoon is fine with me.
Whatever takes to get it done.
If you have a noon executive, do they meet for about two hours?
Probably not that long.
I was gonna say, the more important question, they bring lunch.
I'm gonna make sure.
He's gonna go to their meeting.
Would 2:00 work for you?
Sure.
Okay.
It's Tuesday, the April...
The 29th.
29th.
Madam Clerk, this would be a special meeting to consider potential Project 10 applications[1777.62]